Are you ready? All right, I'm going to call the Wednesday, June 21st, 2023, North Borough South for Regional School Committee Meeting to order. And the first order of business is that we're going to re-rate the schedule. Because we have some just some funding issues. The entire robotics team is here now and it's silly to have them sit through all of our scintillating processes. So we're going to move them up and then we're going to move, and then Principal Bevan has to leave, so we're going to move some of his stuff up. Is that okay with everybody? It is the wheel of the team. Okay, all right. Then first item is up to you.
All right, so recognition of retirees. So this evening, we have several retirees in the audience we'd like to recognize. So let's see who. The first person is Parker Amberson.
So Joanne has been a long time educator at Algonquin. She is the heart and soul of this space, has brought so much care to the students. She's been the library instructionalist for how many years?
Many, many years.
But Joanne is always willing to help out, cares deeply about her students, cares deeply about the educators, and has a great asset to the community of Algonquin. And she also brings Parker every once in a while.
Every day.
As you may have heard, Parker graduated from Algonquin, so Joanne and Parker will be missed next year greatly. And we have a small token.
Thank you.
So I won't share whether you have your husband or your husband. And then Sean will say a few words.
Yeah, Joanne's been wonderful and a wonderful advocate here in the building for student mental health, and Parker's been a real, a real part of that. And was the big, I'll show you a photograph later at graduation, but Parker walked the stage of graduation as Joanne, and it was really a lovely moment. Yeah, it's a very special moment for everyone, but especially you guys. We'll miss you here in the library.
Thank you.
You can ask him that. Right. Next, we have Lynn Horson. Lynn has been a longtime educator, support specialist. Wonderful job with the students. She's also been director of studies tutor when I was. So she has been a true asset to our special education department and our students. She comes to work with a smile every day. Abby before, Lynn, has been a great colleague, and she will be deeply missed. But again, we'll have to substitute papers for three of them.
I did hear that. Thank you.
So thank you for your service and you.
Yeah. Yeah, when I got here, one of the really lovely things about the high school is that we have this tutoring program, and there are not a lot of adults who are assigned to it, and they don't work with a huge volume of students, but the volume of the students that you work with, we only hear wonderful things about, and it gets them across the finish line often kicking and screaming, and they might not have gotten there without your help. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And last, Felicia. Felicia has been a long-standing special education educator at Algonquin. And if you ever see Felicia in the hallway, she always has a smile. She is a true advocate for our students, is a champion for students. She's committed to her work. She's had a department chair, she has volunteered for many clubs and activities, and she has been a wonderful employee who we greatly miss. Pointing hearts towards you.
Oh, thank you.
But I think you are excited about the next step.
I am.
And as a small token of our appreciation.
Thank you. My favorite color.
And we will very much miss you, Felicia. You've been such a great colleague at SBLT, which is our leadership team. And so I think we always think of you as the hard work you do with kids, but often what is overlooked is the hard work you do on their behalf behind the scenes and as a leader. And I really enjoyed working with you in the last few years. We'll miss you.
On our retiree, we have a small food sampling. So take a few minutes to enjoy the food, and which are retired about. Take a five-minute recess, or the chairs are two minutes.
Sure, so it gives me great pleasure to introduce our first robotics team, 1100 Inverspolarity, who I think we all were aware that we had a robotics team, but this group, I think, we've been very much aware when we were hustling through the world championship paperwork that was a surprise, I think, to everybody, but we were so excited about it. And so I'm not going to say.
... of watching a robot do its work. So I'm going to kick it over to our head coach, Dan Strickland, and Manisha, who is here. She's a graduate of ours and of 2015, so welcome back. And we're going to talk about the program, and Manisha's going to steer from this computer.
All right, okay. Yeah, well, thank you all for giving us this opportunity to come here and present. Like I said, I'm Dan Strickland. I've been the advisor for, actually, I've been with the team for, ever since it started, several, like 20 years ago, and I've been the advisor for about the last 15 years. Both of my children went to school here. I live in town, so once I started, I couldn't leave. So I'm not going to spend too much time. These guys are going to present a short little presentation on the team and what we do, and then we're going to hopefully show off our robot a little bit. We're going to start off with Fred.
I'll try to use the mic so that the people online can hear. It can rearrange so you can see the slides more easily. So my name is Fred Probst. As Mr. Strickland mentioned, I have been on the team for four years. I'm a senior, graduated this year. And as you saw on the previous slide, we are Team 1100 Inverspolarity. Inverspolarity is our name. And so the next question is, what is Team 1100? Well, Team 1100 is a number, the number of our team within the organization called FIRST. FIRST is an acronym that stands for Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology. There will be a test after. There won't be. And FIRST is a global organization that seeks to do just that. Inspire students from a wide variety of ages to go into STEM careers. And it also, in addition, teaches students the skills, hard skills and soft skills they need to succeed in life. And it also connects them with professionals in these careers that they can use later in life.
Hi, I'm Mustafa. I'm a junior, and I will be talking about our, like, amount of people that we've had. So this year, we had around 38 students with nine mentors, which we will talk about later. We had, we averaged around 20 to 50 members over the past 20 years that we've been operating. And we've had 250 students in total since our beginning year in 2003.
Hi, I'm Anthea. I'm a freshman, and ironically enough, I'm going to be talking about our graduating seniors. As you can see from the chart, you can see the number of graduating seniors who are pursuing careers in STEM. And we have a majority who want to be going to STEM as they leave high school. But as you can see, we've actually had a larger amount of diversity from our seniors, which is really great because it shows that they're taking these hard skills and soft skills that they've learned from FIRST, and they're applying it to their lives outside of high school, and it's really helping them move on and become really well-rounded people and alumni.
Speaking of alumni, I am Mike Mullinex. I was on the team from 2005 to 2007, and Dan was one of my mentors as well. And that's what makes this program really unique, is that our students get to work with professionals throughout the industry. And because our team's been around for so long at this point, we are now going full circle where people like myself and lots of the other folks in the room tonight were on the team, have gone off to school, and are now professionals out in the engineering and professional worlds, and are able to share that experience with our students. And we also do have some parents and industry folks who came in through sponsors, or they were on the team when their student was, and they never left. So it's a great program that's unique in that way. And I'm going to hand it over to Autumn to talk about some of our outreach in the community.
Hi, I'm Autumn. I, this past year, was a junior, and we do a lot for our community, at least I hope so. You may have seen us in Northborough at Apple Fest or in Southborough at Summer Nights. We like to give demonstrations for kids and adults, whoever is interested on robots and STEM. We even go outside our community to events like Geek is Blam, which happens at WPI, to help bring STEM to a wider variety of people, including women. We don't just reach so far out, we also help inside the school. We've been helping with developing curriculum for digital literacy classes, as well as the new Intro to Computer Science class. We allow our students to actually go into the classrooms and interact with these classes, helping the teachers to facilitate lessons to teach students programming.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jason Damaris. I am one of the alumni mentors that Mike mentioned, so I graduated from Algonquin and from Team 1100 back in 2012. I got the short straw and get to talk to you about money. So we are a privately financed team. We get all of our money from corporate donations, from fundraisers that we run here at Algonquin, from private donations, and from STEM grants that we apply for every year. That's a ton of work. It's pretty much year-round for most of us. Because of that, we offer the team to, at no cost to our students, with the exception of travel to Worlds once in a while. As you can see, our annual operating budget is a little bit higher than most after-school clubs at about $25,000. Most of that is paid directly from our sponsors to FIRST for registration, which allows FIRST to put on the events for us all around the world. The rest of that money goes towards our materials, our travel, food for the team, things like that. I did want to address one other thing. T Carrier has a big slice up there. I saw on the agenda that there is approval for a Carrier donation. That is my employer. That comes through me. If you have any questions about that, you can feel free to grab me whenever. I'd love to answer those. And Fred, I believe you're next.
Those are sponsors, which, again, he explained are various companies, don't just provide support through money, they also provide resources that we use within the facilities, like lab resources and tools to build the robots that we need to build. And they also provide knowledge through our mentors, because we have companies who our mentors work for, and they come here to teach those, teach us the skills that we need to know.
So this year, our team was very fortunate to be invited to the World Championships, which is basically our smaller events on a massive scale. It's eight times the size. So we are very grateful for you, the school committee, for approving our request for travel to Houston so rapidly. We know it was a very sudden occurrence, but the event was really life-changing for me, at least. It was massive, as I said. There are over 600 teams. There are more than 50,000 people from, like, all over the world. It's an international competition. And we got to compete against some of the most elite teams in the world, and it was very exciting. There was also an opportunity for students to explore the colleges and corporations that demo and provide information on their respective programs. So we got to take advantage of those opportunities because of this event. So again, thank you for allowing us to experience this.
So we have a slide for questions, if there's any questions. And then after that, we can move on to a quick robot demo to show what a robot does, because as we mentioned, it's, we're a competitive robotics team, and they release a game each year that we have to compete in. And so a robot has to complete different tasks. Any questions? Yes.
How do you do?
Great question. Yeah, we have a slide for that.
There you go.
Sammy, do you want to talk about this? Or I guess she's preparing. We did, we did quite well, considering that we were going to World Championships. There are different levels that we have to achieve in order to get there. We have some regional competitions that we compete at, too. And then after we do well at those, we were in the top ranks there, often six, there was one that we were 10th, and then there's one that we were fourth. And then once we do well at those two competitions, we can move on to what's called the championship, New England Championship, which is for all the teams in New England. And we ended up being fifth in that, in that competition, which is fantastic. And that allowed us to move on to World Championships. And we, on our division, on our field, there were eight fields, stretching a third of a mile, which is pretty insane. We were around halfway there. We were around 30th out of about 70, which is fantastic, and we were happy with our results. Anything else? One of the competitions, we got this award that they give out awards for different teams for various things. We got the creativity award for our robot. So that's what this represents.
If I could jump in as well. One of the other things that you may see on the slide is district championship Dean's List finalist. So in addition to the team being able to win awards, you know, qualify with our robot at different levels of the gameplay, our students also have the opportunity to win individual awards that are recognized on a global scale. So this year, we had the awesome privilege of Autumn advancing to the World Championship for her contribution to our community, our school, and the team, and all of her hard work. So.
Does your robot have a name?
It does have a name. The name is Etienne, which is the name of one of our mentors, Jason here, the name he had in French class back when he was in school.
We're going to try to drive it around. Do you want to explain the game a little?
Yes, so they, they release a game each year. This, they release it in January, and we have about six weeks to build a robot. This year, basically, the goal of the game is to pick up cones and cubes and then place them on loading stations. The cones you place on these poles, and then the cubes you can place on platforms right next to the base. So we have a basic arm and an intake with rollers that can suck the cubes and the cones up.
The cubes is another word.
Yeah. There's a lot that goes into this. There's a lot of mechanical designing the robot and building it, manufacturing it. There's electrical. And then there's software as well.
It's usually higher. Wow. Devil's perception.
So yeah, so they had to come up with a unique design that can pick up, so each year, we had to come up with a new design, so we don't have to start from scratch. You know, so we'll be a new robot next year. This was a particular challenge, because again, an arm is a difficult thing to build. A lot of times, we're building things that pick up balls and throw them, so this was a little more challenging. But again, it was a very cool design, and they, well, it's a little bit beat up now because it's been through a lot. Because we were at another competition a couple of weeks ago in WPI where we had our new rookie drivers take the robot, and that's a little bit scary because.
They don't know the power they have.
Right. The normal drive team spends weeks practicing and gets really, really good. You can imagine that this is, there's six robots on the field at once, and three against three, and they're trying to accomplish this task of moving and picking up these cubes. So there's, things are happening extremely fast. Decisions have to be made very fast. But the students did very well. Again, we wanted to thank you again and give a face to some of the, you know, the people that you, you know, we have to approve for things. So we really do this with our mentors, so I wanted to bring our mentors to see.
Yeah, and I would love to emphasize something that I really haven't said, is the amount of time you put into this. Evenings here in the building where you're away from your families, and you have, it's still there for the kids, and the family obligations, other things are still there when you get home. So thank you to our mentors, but thank you to work. It took a lot of time, a lot of effort to go from, you know, the buildings, to learn what you have to build, or what the challenge is to designing it, to building it, and just the amount of hours I can only imagine. Where I see it, I see it on a daily, but congratulations. We're very grateful.
So one last thing, if you have any more questions, or want to see some of our other robots, or want to see this demoed more in full, then we will be here tonight. We have some other members of our team here, and we're meeting tonight. We'll be down at C110. So if you want to stop by, that's down the hall and then to the left. So if you want to stop by, ask questions, see other robots, we'd love to see you.
So I just want to take a minute and thank all of you for your hard work and time. You should be very proud of your accomplishments. As Principal Bevan mentioned, there is no shortage of hours that you've put into this endeavor. Also, as a district, we talk a lot about the portrait of a graduate, and how do we measure the portrait of the graduate? What is evidence? And our mentors, who are volunteering their time and are learning from their careers and their success, to me, is great evidence that we have a very successful program here at Algonquin. So I want to thank our mentors for your time and energy. It's greatly appreciated. And we're going to talk about payment, you know. I think we said we probably could afford a penny per hour. Thank you. And to the seniors, you've left a legacy. So Worlds, so that's going to be a hard milestone to reach again, but you've left the bar high, and we're very excited for students who are continuing this journey at Algonquin, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we want to. Now we're going to go to do minutes.
Have a comment?
Yeah, let's do that. So next on the agenda, or first on the agenda technically, is public comment. Do you have any public comment? Anybody out in the audience? Anybody at the table? No? Okay, then do you want to go to the Health and Fitness Department? Okay, we'll go to the Health and Fitness Department presentation.
So this evening, we have Brian Mossen, who is Health and Wellness Education Department Chair, so he'll be providing an update to the committee.
Brian's brought no robots. But I think I could use them. So I introduce you, Brian Mossen, who's the department chair of the Health and Fitness Department, and he's going to give an update of that department's hard work.
So before I get started, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to share what we do in Health and Fitness, and thank you for all the work that you have done and continue to do for Algonquin. I also want to thank Sean, his administrative team, for their support and leadership through the years. It's interesting, when I first started working at Algonquin, my department chair at the time mentioned to me that it was a destination school. At that time, I dismissed that thought. Now, decades later, I'm echoing that same statement to others, and it is a privilege to be a part of such a great learning community. As I see what's happening outside, the changes, it's just a reminder of the constant commitment that Algonquin, our community, has to learning and education. So that said, I am going to share with you three items this evening. Want to provide a quick overview of our program. Want to mention what our focus has been the past couple of years, and then also what our goals are in the years ahead. So quick review, we have four courses, four primary courses, Health and Fitness 9, 10, 11, and 12, and then we have one elective. These four courses are requirements at Algonquin, and each student goes through them. Health and Fitness 9 is normally the starting point for our students, and it's designed with the main focus of personal fitness. It also provides a great way for our freshmen coming in to get acclimated to Algonquin. And as you can see, they experience a host of activities. The picture, of course, being our freshmen preparing or developing their golf game. From Health and Fitness 9, we travel to Health and Fitness 10. Our Health and Fitness 10 program is designed for sophomores, primarily looks at health-related issues facing adolescents. The course covers a range of topics. As you can see, it welcomes guest speakers in addition to the classroom. They also have one or two days a week of fitness activities, and you can see the picture of the group huddle, one of those fitness days. From Health and Fitness 10, we jump to Health and Fitness 11. Our junior program, the primary focus is on team building and working in a group setting. There's a big emphasis on helping students see and understand the value of other viewpoints and perspectives. We spend a lot of time outside, experiencing hiking, disc golf, climbing, and much more. And this picture, two of our wonderful juniors are regrouping as they climb the Giants Ladder. Well, from our juniors, we travel to our seniors. Our senior program is basically about preparing our students for life after high school. In the process, creating opportunities for them to have fun with their classmates as they exit our hallways and head out into the real world. Like the other courses mentioned, they too participate in a host of activities, and love this, is one of our pictures of our senior classes during class. We do have one elective, as mentioned, our weight training elective. Our weight training elective is a great opportunity for students to learn about weight training and conditioning, and to get their workout done during the day, which can be very beneficial, especially if they work or have other responsibilities after school. From our program review, as I mentioned, we traveled to what our big focus has been the past few years, and you have certainly been a part of that. As a result of insect damage and other related issues, our ropes course was in desperate need of some repair. And thankfully, with the help of you, and specifically, I mentioned Keith and Becky, and I know Mike Gorman, Sean, we were able to design and implement a renovated ropes course that was completed this past December. And here's a picture of that. This picture, by the way, taken by one of our awesome juniors, is a picture that's in .5. Say, why do I mention that? Well, that's something I learned this year. You can take a .5 picture on your smartphone. I didn't quite gather that until my students took this picture, and I was thinking it's a far cry from the rotary phone that I grew up with. Anyway, if you do look at this picture, there are seven climbing elements. These elements, combined with the two that we have already, provide us with nine climbing elements, six of which, you can have two climbers climb at the same time, and one of these, if you can see over to the corner, you'll see a better shot in a minute, the lily pad involves the entire class, great activity. Some more pictures on our ropes course. We have a student climbing Pirate's Crossing, Centipede. Student climbing up that wooden element. And then we also have the catwalk, and next to that. It's always good to know where you're going. So a few goals, we look forward to enhancing student engagement in our classes in the years ahead. We look forward to implementing the new state health frameworks, finally, maybe, hopefully, with Mary Ellen. And then also excited about working with Jen, Dr. Jen Lipton, in implementing SOS. What is SOS? It's a suicide prevention program that helps students recognize signs of depression and suicide in themselves and in others and then take to action or hopefully they take to action. We hope that this program will be beneficial for our students as they navigate many challenges of adolescence. So from there, I want to pause to see if you have any questions about our program or what we're looking to do. Is there?
Ninth grade, do the kids take the line dancing?
We have done some line dancing and they, it's all about if we can get the teacher and, you know, working with the line. We've done some line dancing and do they take to it? Hmm. Tough response. Tough question. Some of them do. Yeah, they can do it, so.
And will you be offering seventh graders SOS this year, next year as well? I see it says that they participated successfully. Is it intended to be constant now?
It is. We're picking it up in ninth grade and 11th grade, so.
Will seventh do it again?
Yeah.
It's already been implemented in seventh grade and the goal will be to be in seventh grade and ninth and 11th grade every year going forward.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone know how to do a .5 picture?
I do.
Would you like to take one?
I might.
So my question is, if I recall correctly, in 10th grade, it seemed like there seemed to be an emphasis on mental health, sex education, and a lot of things that felt less traditional than like a physical gym class or physical ed class, which I'd like to see, but just a question, is any reasoning why it's say 11th grade or 10th grade versus ninth grade, like right at the beginning of high school or just?
Why the 10th grade have more of a health-related concept or some of the mental health? Through the years, we have looked at that with ninth grade and we have infused some of those activities. Throughout the whole program, students get aspects of mental health, but we have felt through the years from a maturity standpoint that sophomores in some of the content are probably better to receive like the family life stuff, sex education. But we do, you know, each class has like a health aspect of it, so there are times that the sophomore program is more focused in the classrooms. They may have one day a week or two that they might do an activity, but you know, I think of our seniors and the juniors, sometimes we will go into the classroom and weave in some of these aspects of mental health or, you know, other items that will help them, you know, related to what you're mentioning, so.
And then just to add, sorry Brian, as you had pointed out, John, the students will have signs of suicide in ninth grade, the health education in 10th grade, you're referring to signs of suicide again in 11th grade. Not that a one, kind of one-time signs of suicide program is the same as a full year or, you know, a full program of mental health education, but there are not big long gaps where we're not attending to it.
And I'll just pile on to a little bit more. The new state health frameworks is, this is, for those who don't know, it's been sort of stalled for a number of years. Our current frameworks are from 98?
1999.
1999. And there has been a draft set of new frameworks for a number of years now, but it has, as I said, been stalled in the legislature. There is a pretty strong indication now coming from Maura Healey that she wants this to move. So we are expecting and hoping, as Brian said, that it will. And with the adoption of a new set of frameworks, it's a real opportunity for us to look at our courses, our programming, and sort of say, okay, where are we currently meeting the standards and what way are we meeting the standards and where are there places where we might want to think differently about how we distribute things over the years or across courses or have, you know, different offerings. So we're anticipating that.
We shifted to health and fitness and so it's broader. It's not, you know, you take a physical education class the other times and then you have, you know, just this one class where you dump all this health information in. And we have been waiting for the state frameworks to see where we might be able to infuse some of those, you know, maybe in a more formal setting because now some of those may be informally or a part of a unit. So that's a conversation we think going forward, we hope to have more of.
Brian, I was just going to say, one of the things that I think your team is really cognizant of is that that ninth grade year is a year where, you know, you're really having those two towns merged together and it's so important to do that team building and that is one of the areas that I see your ninth grade teachers really excelling at.
I had a question about the SOS program. So it says it's going to be taught by counselors and educators. So is that the same folks who are teaching your other classes? You know, all the other units?
So we have Jennifer Lipton-O'Connor, who's kind of spearheading this, so she might be, she's the expert.
So we're going to be doing training in August with Jen on that.
That was my follow-up.
Can you repeat the question?
It says counselors and educators will be teaching this, so I was wondering if that's your?
So Brian and I have been working together and I think our plan is that we are going to be pairing some of our adjustment counselors with the health educators, so they'll be delivering it as a team.
Okay. And is it just like for a week during the year or how's it going to be rolled out?
The actual program is delivered during like one class period. So we'll sort of find, we're planning like a three-week window, say, so we'll rotate through all of the health classes during that window because you really only want to do one or two classes a day because a certain set of students are going to need immediate follow-up. So you want to do it early in the day, not right before the end of the day so that you have that time to process the information you get back from the students and then follow-up is needed. So it's kind of in a window of time.
It's sort of a combination of a learning opportunity for students about what are the signs that you would see in yourself or others, but then they have the opportunity to either self-identify or identify someone else that they're worried about. And that's the part that Jennifer's saying, in that same day, we go through all of the data before they leave the building so that if we've learned something from a student, we're responding to it. So it's kind of a combination, you know, there's also learning that's happening first.
And I will, sorry Jen, go ahead.
Because now we've been planning this, Brian and I have been meeting about it, you know, we're going to sort of set the stage for the students before this one-time sort of infusion of this training. And we'll also provide opportunities for families to get the information. That's what we did at the two middle schools. So parents can view the videos, parents can ask questions, families have the opportunity to opt their child out of that session and students can also choose not to participate. So there's, we'll have a lot of communication about it as, you know, we get closer to it so families have as much information as they need.
So just to add, this is a program that we used in the school where I came from and we had been doing it for seven, eight years before I left and came here and it was really valuable. And one of the values I saw in it is that every student gets some training every other year. As a result, it's always in the, like, the mainstream of people's discussions. You're never too far away from having a conversation about it. Families see it coming through in mailers and things like that, so it just keeps, you know, suicide prevention at not always the forefront, but never off of people's attention and that's so important and that was one of the real benefits we saw.
And then I think when we combine it with a lot of other things like our, say something, tip line and just really focusing on those right connections with our students, I think when you piece it all together, it just really helps support all of our students.
Thank you.
And thank you, and I should also, oh, sorry Cass, did you?
I was curious, how popular is the weight training class? Is that something people want to take?
So the weight training class is, has been re, I'll say rebooted. That was one of our goals actually, well, last time I came. So we are in the process, we've had that about a year and it has been, there have been some good signups for the weight training if it matches the schedules, of course, but we're running two sections, so there's definitely the interest, you know.
And I was in the middle of, sorry Cass to interrupt you, but I was just in the middle of thanking Brian for taking on, signs of suicide's a big, you know, it's a big undertaking for Dr. Lipton-O'Connor and for Brian to work on together and so we're excited about it, but it's going to be a lot of work. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Principal's report.
Thank you, everyone. So, and thank you for moving things up a little bit. We have a support to report, but our first order of business, and I don't know how to do this officially, is to welcome our new Student Advisory Committee Representative, Cass Mello. And I know under new business, it says that there's vote to be taken for this, so it might make sense to do that and then we can have Cass deliver her report.
Let's make it official.
Let's do it.
Do I hear a motion to, are we appointing, electing? We're not electing, appointing?
Voting.
Voting. We're voting on having our new student advisory member. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. So moved. All right, moved by Kathy, segmented by Paul. I can't see everybody. Okay, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Welcome.
It gives me great pleasure to introduce Cass Mello, who's a student bar, is a rising senior, right?
Yeah.
Who has, is very involved and she has a slide who, she'll go over some of the things she's involved here with here at school. You very well have seen her here, she's attended school committee meetings in the past as a member of the Student Advisory Committee. She participates in Harbinger, she has been a member of student government, works for Satium, which is our literary magazine, has done work with the ADL and is also participating in the new club that we're going to learn more about in a little bit from Ms. Carminiani. But welcome, Cass Mello. And also before we, well, maybe you can introduce the other members of the Student Advisory Committee who have joined us here tonight.
So Sarah Leonard was elected, but she unfortunately was unable to make it. But we do have Amelia Sinclair on the left, we have Madison Decoja and Madison Wilson on the right.
So thank you guys and congratulations on your election, so. Okay, so we're going to kick it over to you. You're welcome to.
Thank you. So as Mr. Bevan said, I am involved in a few things here and I do also hope to become a high school English teacher one day. So nice to see you all. Hopefully you hire me in the future. Our alternate who will fill in for me if I'm unable to attend a meeting is Amelia Sinclair and she's also involved in many student organizations. She's very active, especially for mental health among students and is well-known for her new club, Mental Health Advocacy. And she does hope to skydive one day. Great thing to learn about her. Sarah Leonard had dance tonight, which is why she's unable to make it, but she's also highly involved in student government and DECA and she teaches the Writing Center and hopes to travel to different countries someday, which is wonderful. Madison Wilson uses Chile pronouns, is involved in student government, orchestra, camaraderie singer, runs a advocating for change project and plays tennis and hopes to become a Yale University forensic psychologist or environmental lawyer, which is a mouthful, but very excited for you. And Madison Decoja, who's also involved in numerous things, student government, ADL, archery, and we're so thankful that she is so good with running social media accounts and she's started our new SAC one this year, which is awesome. She's the only Northborough member on our committee, but she does hope to become a speech and language pathologist, which is also wonderful.
So we may hire her as well.
So we put out a student survey earlier this month and based on our responses, some top concerns were Wi-Fi, mental health, with 75% saying they're very stressed about finals and 53% say they did not feel supported at Algonquin regards to mental health. Another issue was staffing diversity, which we do recognize is very difficult and 60% of students said they did not feel their identity was very represented by staff. Substance use is also important to recognize. We had a few students respond with concerns about that, but there is a group in Compass made of the local youth and family services organizations, which had discussions with students in, with the junior class mostly, to learn more around the culture of substance use, vaping and alcohol. And there's also some concern around variation in learning, different types and strengths being played on because oftentimes you'll see in many classes that one teacher will focus just on visual learning, another may do more auditory and for some students that don't succeed in that, there are concerns of being able to help vary it, like I know we've got a few concerns from students who have vision impairments and wear glasses and may be seated towards the back of the room or forget their glasses one day and they have more trouble participating in that class. So encouraging support for different kinds of learning is definitely something that we are concerned about. Our main goals for this year are positive policy changes. With Ben this past year, we did put up a few policies that we're definitely hoping to continue investigating with you. There's a group, MAZER, Massachusetts Association for Student Representatives, which unites student advisory committees from all over Massachusetts together to work for statewide policies. One of the main things they pushed for this past year, you may have heard of, was the continuation of the school lunch program for Massachusetts, providing funding for that. So it's great and we're getting more involved in that as it's really awesome to have ability for school committees and representatives to come together and work towards great goals. We are connecting with the student body with our new social media pages and new emails we've worked with the school to get these past few weeks for mental health support, another one of our goals. We are concerned about a few things. One that we'd like to look into is establishing of mental health awareness days. In the past, there have been ones more related to families and like unplugging yourself for the night, which many teachers have allowed for, but we do think mental health awareness is also important and beyond just screen use, that ability for students to take a break from a lot of schoolwork and extracurriculars could be a real asset. For staffing diversity, if there's anything we could do to help with increasing staff in regards to race, ethnicity, gender, disabilities, LGBTQ identity or others, we are more than willing to help and we've been doing some of our own research in the past few years about different parts of it and how some other schools have been able to work with that. And then for increasing awareness of the regional school committee and student advisory committee, we are going to establish monthly surveys to students and we'd also like to look into breakfast with administrators, which may include members of regional school committee or members of SAC next year. For those who don't know, this past few years, we've had some great meetings where in the mornings before school for about 20 to 30 minutes, students will meet with members of administration and it'll be a free space for them to foster dialogues and ask any questions they may have or voice concerns about the school, which is where some of the major Wi-Fi discussions this past year occurred and we think it could be a real asset to help include more people in the school community into that process. Some of our recent events, we had carnival at the very end of last month, which was really great. Thank you for those who showed up and those who got on a dunk tank. That was really wonderful. We had the rugby state finals, which they unfortunately did not win, but it's still really great that we had a team this spring and all the way to the final game. A lot of groups have been doing Pride Month events, including the Writing Center, which had a big event in the cafeteria. There was Junior Sunrise, which is where they, after seniors graduated, all of the juniors got together in the senior parking lot and kind of threw a party for themselves with lots of music and people brought like Dunkin' Donuts. It was just really great and unifying for students. There was a new Harbinger issue, which I think some of you got at the last meeting and I also see a few around the tables. And you can see Ben right there in the seniors' Kimball trip, which went out at the very end of last month, beginning of this one. Some of our recent events, we had Carnival at the very end of last month, which was really great. Thank you for those who showed up and those who got on a dunk tank, that was really wonderful. We had the Rugby State Finals, which they unfortunately did not win, but it's still really great that we had a team this spring that go, and all the way to the final game. A lot of groups have been doing Pride Month events, including the Writing Center, which had a big event in the cafeteria. There was Junior Sunrise, which is where they, after seniors graduated, all of the juniors got together in the senior parking lot and kind of threw a party for themselves with lots of music, and people brought like Dunkin' Donuts, it was just really great and unifying for students. There was a new Harbinger issue, which I think some of you got at the last meeting, and I also see a few around the tables. And you can see Ben right there in the seniors' Kimball trip, which he went out at the very end of last month, beginning of this one, where it was just lots of fun, they had a barbecue and played lots of different games.
Is that a .5?
For the rest of more recent events, we had this month graduation, we had, where you can see Mr. Bevan and Ben Shanzar right up there, and we had college essay workshop for the Writing Center, which is an annual workshop where tutors work with many of the juniors to help them start the college essay writing process. And we had a bunch of seniors there who had already written theirs and were able to give a lot of testimony to their own experiences and support for students. Unity Beyond Differences is the new group that Ms. Carminiani, I believe, is gonna be addressing, which is really wonderful and a great group for bringing people together with hopes for fostering good conversations and really unifying students. We had a musical reveal, which is The Addams Family for this fall. Some students are excited, some are a little bit concerned, but overall, we're expecting a great musical this year, as always. So, you know, it'll be wonderful. The Peer Mentor Program has already begun preparations for freshman orientation, which is always wonderful. They always do a great job, and we're very happy to have them supporting our freshmen. And the AP Gov classes brought up students from, was it Proctor or Peaslee?
Peaslee.
Peaslee, went up to Algonquin for a civics lesson, and these kids had just passed the AP Gov exam, so they're very well-versed and very good students, and I heard it went really great and provided a great opportunity for those who are in civics classes at a younger level to really engage with students who are more experienced and a bit older than them, which is really lovely. So, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Nice to see you all, yes?
So, I noticed in the first page you said that you just recently did a survey and 60%, and you had your percentages.
Yeah.
How many people participated in that survey?
I believe it was 60 people.
Right, and how many people are in the school?
Definitely more than 60.
1,220 when the seniors are here.
So, I guess, so the thing I might suggest, as you're doing these surveys, because you plan on doing them monthly?
Yes.
You should think about how you're going to encourage more participation, because 60 out of a 1,200 is a, it's an interesting sample, but I don't necessarily know that it's representative.
I agree.
So, it's something to think about, so, and I think it might be good as you're including that in your survey results, you actually show what the universe is, because...
Yes, I did mean to, I think we talked about it.
I, I meant to add that into the slide that that was on you.
Yes.
I think it's pretty relevant.
I think part of it was, we sent an email out, and we talked to people in person, and we posted it out on social media, but at this point, end of the year, it's like getting into finals.
I understand that, I think just, we really wanna consider as you're, because the way you presented it,
No, I agree, yes.
we should think about.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it. Any other questions? Okay, awesome.
Great first job, that was great, yeah, well done, Cass. Thank you. So, so, you still have some more. So, as you might recall, we've been talking about this in just about every meeting in little parts, but our students from London visited between last time we met each other, and so, I wanted to give you an update on how that went. So, students from the Lister Community School in London met with our, shadowed our students, there are 24 of their students, shadowed 24 of our students for two days, and that meant spending their day here at the high school, doing some extracurricular events, and it was a real success and really enjoyable in a lot of social ways, but the real goal for that group was to watch American high school education at work, specifically mathematics education, so they'd written a grant through their State Department. And so, just last week, and since I submitted the packet to you, I was able, between submitting the packet and today, was able to meet with, on a Zoom call with the trip organizer in London and hear what their takeaways were, because there was no like ability to singularly kind of gather all that in one spot, and they had some time to decompress and think about it. They overwhelmingly kept saying that our school and the way adults interact with kids and students interact with each other is that it's much warmer and much more relaxed than what they're used to. So, in their school, for reasons I don't fully understand just entirely, their students wear uniforms, they have to walk in certain directions in the hallways, they have rules, upon rules upon rules, and so, they came to our school and felt like students were treated really respectfully and treated adults respectfully in return. So, that was really nice to hear, they said, these are the quotations, they, that we have an observable atmosphere of mutual respect between, between students and staff. On the left-hand side, you see a photo of students when they just met each other. Now, they had met each other over Zooms on kind of like introductory meetings over the course of the weeks and months leading up. So, this was not the first time they were interacting with their pair. On the middle picture, this is the students, if you might recall, they wanted to do one thing, if nothing else, was to ride a yellow American school bus as they see, is the quintessential American school experience. And I told them it was the most ordinary experience you could think of, and they're very excited about that. On the right-hand side, they ended their day on the Friday, after spending two days with us, they ended their day at Apex, and so, they bowled and played video games and arcade games, and then they spent the rest of their trip doing some touring, they visited MIT, Harvard, New York City, a few other things. So, it was a really exciting partnership, and I anticipate maybe we would do something with Lister potentially in the future. So, I think maybe in the fall, we can begin the conversation, and I've referenced this a few times, they would be happy to host our students and maintain these same pairings, and those friendships, I think, have maintained themselves, as I understand, of all the social media. The downsides for social media, I think this is one of the upsides, where they can kind of maintain contact with each other, and I think our students would enjoy doing that, so that might be a conversation we can have in the fall for a potential trip to London to visit them, and then to do all the many things that our students would enjoy about a trip to England. Are there any questions about that? That was a lot of short, short amount of time. So, just quickly, and many of you were here in the room, were here in the building when we did this, we had graduation a few weeks ago, it was moved inside unfortunately, despite the fact that we had multiple rain dates to move around, we just had three uninterrupted days of very cold, very threatening and rainy weather. It was moved indoors, it was an amazing group of students, and we were happy, sad to see them go, but it was a nice ceremony, and they enjoyed it, and as you saw and met, Parker graduated as well, and we had him walk across the stage of graduation and receive a ceremonial diploma, which was a real highlight of the day, it was a really wonderful celebration of our student, of our senior class. And additionally, Kathy Carminiani, Assistant Principal, has been working very hard over the course of this last several months to bring into, into the finish this group, so I'll pass it over to you, Kathy.
Sure, thanks. I had begun the conversations working, okay, thanks, working with one of our students, Patrick Biyamu, and we had probably started, beginning of this past year, just talking about the need for some type of organization to look, to kind of advocate for minority students, and what could we do? So, together, we looked at what was available outside, what different schools are doing, we looked at some research, just how could we do this and do it right? So, we ended up contacting someone that I actually went to graduate school with, Dr. Tamika Jax, and she was able to kind of work with us on, you know, what are you looking to do? How, how will you do this, and what kind of experiences do you want the students to have? So, we were able to meet, our first meeting was June 9th, and we had a great meeting, we had 80 students, or a little bit over 80, we had it during the school day, we had it during the lunch block period, and Dr. Jax came and kind of really talked to them about their experiences. They, they were able to share some experiences of how, how they feel at Algonquin, which was great, and the, you know, the level of support that they feel. So, that was, it was very good, it was informative, and, you know, she really talked to them about what they could do as a group and what our focus could be. So, we ended up meeting again on June 15th to have a mini retreat. So, after, students took two finals, they came to the library, and from 12:30 to 2:30, we had a retreat where we developed the name, and we developed different committees to work on some actions for the school year. So, I will let you know, the, the name is Unity Beyond Differences, and their, their kind of motto would, would be, it provides all students with the ability to come together, share experiences, and foster a sense of unity within our school. Connecting students of different backgrounds and making every student feel safe and included is the number one priority, is a positive collaborative group working to educate and unify Algonquin and the community at large. So, we're really excited about some programs that we have for the coming year, whether it be, you know, working with some passive programming through the calendar and through, through putting things on social media, through the week ahead that we do for the students, and then, you know, looking at having some assemblies and having some, an international day for students. So, I think it was a really, it was a really good start and one that needed to happen, and we're, we're happy it did, so. I have a copy of just the Instagram post, I can pass it around.
It's a real success, Kathy had been quietly working on this over time, and it came together in a really exciting way, and I can't see if you attended both, is that right? Yep. Share about.
It was a good experience.
There was a lot of energy, I mean, it's the end of the year, it's a hard thing, a hard time to launch an effort like this, but it was, I think there's a lot of inertia going into the summer that we can pick up in most of the fall, perhaps, or once we return from the fall.
The nice part about that, too, was that we saw students come and participate that had not really ever participated in, in activities at Algonquin before. So, I think that's really, that's a great, a great thing for them.
And that concludes my report.
Can I ask one question that's related to this, but practically unrelated? So, I was curious, when you mentioned the Instagram, and then I was, as I was going around, I was wondering, was it on the, the gonk one, or was it, it seems like we now have a unity beyond differences, and...
So, a lot of our student groups have their own Instagram accounts?
I've noticed that.
Yeah, and I think...
There's football, there's soccer, there's, I mean, it's great. So, my question, and I'm not, so it's unrelated to this, because I think this is great, I love the name, I think that actually speaks to it quite well, but unrelated, is Instagram. How do we manage, if at all, like, like who gets access to put Algonquin on their name, and...
So, it's a question that's kept me up at night for a long time, and this year, I really worked hard to rein in and to get a good handle on this. So, in short, we have guidelines that all student clubs, teams, anything that is endorsed as an official, saying that they are the official, fill in the blank, Twitter account, Instagram account, TikTok account of a school club, that they have to follow certain guidelines, and there are not only like what the legal guidelines are or the, the guidelines published by the Regional School Committee about social media, responsible social media use, there's also best practices that we're trying to encourage. So, each club, so the two students who run this account, I met with them, they reviewed those guidelines, and now are posting with the guidelines in mind, and I, because I helped them establish it, I have a test for, for that account, can change or adjust anything that goes up or down on that account. So, all that, all of the teams that have official social media accounts, their coaches should have the same level of kind of editing access and be guiding the social media footprint based on guidelines being published to them.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a list thing?
Um, no, not in any place I, we're out there. It's supposed to be good, yeah.
It might be nice just to be able to, like, for instance, I might be interested in something that we just be able to follow, something, it might be nice to figure out how we actually put that out there.
Yeah, that's a good idea, I hadn't thought of that. I think we came real far, real fast for establishing some norms and some, everything right down to the color maroon that they use for their logos should be the maroon that we've chosen, which has a real identifier to it. So, we, I think, establish a level of quality control, but also adults provision that never existed, so that's...
Yeah, and I think even if, right, the superintendent, no, Kevin Khan, it's just like, this is a pen, next to like, oh, wait a minute, and you just kind of click, enjoy.
Yeah, there's...
Might actually get much more participation.
Yeah, it's a great idea. Yeah.
Yeah.
I send something out every Friday, yeah. I'd have to do the like collecting part first.
Does that go to parents, or just to kids?
Uh, it goes out to every parent, and any, every parent already in grade nine through, nine through 12, and every student.
Kathy?
Good evening, I always enjoy this presentation, Sean, and getting a sense of what's going on in the school, even as we wait. If I recall this year, you were able to hire a vice principal that had contemplative practice, research, and capacities for that, and I hadn't heard anything about any initiatives that she's, I believe, was undertaking, and, and I'm just curious, as the school year closes, what might be coming up for next year around that?
Yeah, it's funny you should mention that, Kathy and I were just talking today about bringing Ms. Brown to the school committee to just have you kind of interact and see some of the things that she's been doing. She's been, one, had a really great year, and did, I think, some things that come to mind. She's got a, a real expertise in mindfulness and mindfulness education, and so, she did several PD sessions for teachers on mindful education and incorporating mindfulness practices into their, into their teaching. So, that's one thing that jumps to mind, including she did mindfulness, mostly, I think, directly with staff, not as much with students yet. So, I don't know, Kathy, if you have something more to add?
I share an office space with her, so, some of the things Janet's been doing, and she's been having every, twice a week in the mornings, she'll have like a mindfulness, like 40 minutes of meditation for any teachers that, and staff that want to come. And the teachers that are kind of streaming into our office for it, they, they just said it really centers them and kind of really gets them in the right zone, so that they, that's one thing that's been really great. She does, she does do a lot of mindfulness with our students as they come in and kind of working with them and guiding them as, you know, if she sees them for, you know, maybe an attendance issue, we talk about different areas that they can focus on, so.
And I'll, I'll just add that at a district, at the broader district level, she also offered a session as part of our induction for new teachers, new, you know, in their first five years in the profession, it was one of our sessions that was well-attended. She also offered a session as part of our district PD day that was very well-attended on mindfulness. So, she's, we've been getting her out there in a lot of different ways.
Yeah, the research is still impressive, and of course, with Metro, Metro West survey, it's just the kind of infrastructure that we want to build and let it infiltrate throughout. Glad that you're starting the staff, because, you know, they're setting the tone, and, you know, so you always feed the caregiver, and then everybody else gets fed, so I'm glad that you're the staff, but we do prioritize.
One of the sessions she gave was called Something to the Effect of Teacher as an Ecosystem, or as a weather system, I think is what it was, like, a teacher as a weather system, and it was exactly what you just said, like, how do I set the tone? And how do I sort of control my own weather system, because it does impact the system. So, that was, it was a much catchier than I just portrayed, it was a very clever kind of way of talking about you.
Well, they call it limit residence, where my well-being is shared with you, because we're in a vulnerable place, and it's, and by exercising that, it just gets stronger for that person that has to let everybody else hitch on every day.
And some of the, yeah, some of the things that we're looking forward to next year is, we're working on providing our teachers with opportunities for PLCs, for, you know, implementing SEO, mindfulness in the classroom. So, you know, it's definitely things that we are looking forward to, looking forward.
I'll, I'll find a way for Ms. Brown to come and participate in this, and she's always happy to, but there's not a slide that, that, you know, was an entry point for her for here tonight, but sometime soon.
I think it's wise to look at the surveys and be consistent, whether it's a student survey, just so that as programs ramp up, as they become more disseminated, that you get a steady flow of data, that's, that's looking at the kind of things that we really want to see against that as a cause. Yeah, thank you. You are free to go.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
I don't have to go right away, but if I do sneak out, it's because I do have to. Stay until I do have... until I do have.
Thank you very much for a wonderful report. And now I have no idea where we are. Okay. So let us now circle back to action on minutes. And is there anybody who just all in one?
Chris knows. Go, Chris.
Sure. I make a motion that we, that we accept and release the open meeting minutes of May 17th, 2023, the audit subcommittee open meeting minutes of March 23rd, 2023, the capital planning subcommittee open meeting minutes of October 24th, 2022, the collective bargaining subcommittee open meeting minutes of November 29th, 2022, and the operational budget subcommittee open meeting minutes of February 6th, 2023.
Second. Okay. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that is unanimous. Okay. Now what about the executive session minutes? We'll do that in the.
Release.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to release the collective bargaining subcommittee executive session minutes of November 29th, 2022, the executive session minutes of May 17th, 2023, and the retained executive session minutes of September 21st, 2022, October 19th, 2022, November 16th, 2022, December 21st, 2022, January 18th, 2023, February 15th, 2023, March 15th, 2023, and the collective bargaining subcommittee minutes of October 29th, 2022.
Second. Moved by Chris, seconded by Joan. Any discussion? All those in favor? That passes unanimously as well. Chris, you are a rock star.
We appreciate it.
All right. Educational policy, approval of the Harbinger overnight field trip.
So I turn it back over to Principal Bevan?
Sure. Yeah, so I, in your packet, you will have seen a field trip, a student travel proposal for the Harbinger to have a staff trip to attend a convention in Boston. JEA and NSPA National High School Journalism Conference at the Heinz Convention Center as it's an overnight trip, even though it's nearby, it requires approval.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the trip.
All right. I hear a motion by Kathy to approve the Harbinger overnight field trip.
Second.
Second, I saw Karen, seconded by Karen Ayers. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? That passes unanimously as well. And best buddy student leaders and advisors of my field.
Thank you, yes. And thank you for that approval. The best buddies student leaders, it's two student leaders and two advisors are proposing to attend a field trip, but it's a trip to Indiana, Indiana University for a conference on best buddies student leadership.
Great program. But your motion?
I'll make a motion. But I'm a little jealous because Hayden graduated from there last year and it's one of my favorite places to go, so I do approve it a hundred percent.
So you move and you want to go. All right. Move to approve the best buddy student leaders and advisors of my field trip by Kathy, second.
Second.
Second by Paul. Any questions? All those in favor? That passes unanimously. Excellent. Legislative update.
So just a brief update about the governor's budget. So it still is moving through the process, so hopefully it will be in conference committee in the next couple of weeks. And we continue to advocate for regional transportation reimbursement, circuit breaker, minimum local aid, and lastly, our universal free meals. The House budget did include universal free meals, the Senate budget did not. Healy, Governor Healy's budget did, so we continue to advocate that as an important part of the FY24 state level budget. So stay tuned.
Okay. We have done robotics, we have done health and fitness, 2023, 2024, subcommittee and liaison assignments. I'll just go through some of you. I would say if anybody has any other requests or wants to be removed from their assignment, just let me know. And approval of grants and donations.
So we have two grants for your approval. One was mentioned earlier this evening, and that is the approval of the donation of the amount of $1,738 from the Rhythm Dance Company to Aerie just about Best Buddies. And the second was about $3,530 from the Carrier Corporation to the Robotics Club. And we have an employee from Carrier who is also a mentor to the robotics team.
What's Rhythm's connection with Best Buddies?
Dance.
Oh, rhythm. I was asking what's their connection?
I don't know what the connection is. I think this was, Kathy might remember, we had a Best Buddies, was this the fashion, fashion show, or we had a Best Buddies dance? It might have been either or both of those. I don't know what.
Yeah, they, so they held a, Rhythm Dance Company held a dance event at Algonquin to show, showcase their solo dancers and to raise funds for Best Buddies, so that's.
That's great connection.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have the details of our connection to that, but Rhythm Dance.
I'll make a motion to approve and accept the donations from Rhythm Dance Company and Carrier Corporation.
Moved by Matt, second.
Paul, second.
Second by Karen. Any discussion? All those in favor? That passes unanimously. Excellent. Thank you very much to both, Rhythm Dance Company and Carrier Corporation and our amazing mentor. Okay, we've done principals' reports, enrollments.
So in your packet is the enrollment report as of May 18th, and at this point in time, there's no significant variances, and we are monitoring incoming freshman enrollment very closely. It's the time where many freshmen or incoming eighth graders to ninth grade are making decisions around, around attending private school, and we monitor that very closely as it results in our education funding for the FY25 budget process.
Yes, it does. Okay. FY23 monthly general fund expenditure report.
So I'll turn it over to Becky for the general fund expenditure report and also the FY23 statement of revenue.
So unbelievably, we have nine days remaining in fiscal year 2023. It's gone by very quickly. The report that's included in your packet is for the time period ending May 31st, 2023. And as of that date, you can see that we have $373,357 from 1.45% remaining. The finance team right now is working very closely with folks at the high school in terms of our open purchase orders and any encumbrances that we had. And so we are looking to close out the operational budget in, in the month of June. I can report that we have actually made a, the $25,000 payment into our OPEP trust account as well. So we are in the final stages of the budget. I do want to thank Principal Bevan and his staff, and then also the central office leadership team for their help with the 2023 budget. And I'd also like to acknowledge Elena Daco, who is finishing up her first year as the regional financial coordinator. She had moved over from the Northborough position, so she's learning all of the intricacies of a regional budget and she's done a great job.
Do all of them? So.
I'm gonna make a motion to accept the expenditure report as provided until audited.
Second.
Moved by Matt, seconded by Chris. Any questions? All those in favor? Unanimous? And the FY23 statement of revenue?
So May was a fairly quiet month in terms of revenues for the regional budget. We did receive our monthly allocations from the state. One thing that I did want to point out, you'll notice that in athletics, we did receive just about two, just under $270,000 in terms of athletic receipts. That's a combination of fees and gate receipts. You'll also note that in the report that was provided, the monthly general fund report, that the athletics expenses for the fiscal year are just over $300,000. They had begun the year with a starting balance of about $69,000, so we did know that we were going to be tapping into those reserves to, to fulfill the fiscal year 2023 athletic budget, since that is a self-sustaining budget. But other than that, nothing new to report. Both assessments were received from both communities on June 1st. It's not reflected in this report, but they were received since I won't see you again until September.
I have, I have one question. I was thinking about it, is the, somewhere along this year, it was mentioned that we received a, or we will receive a donation of like $40,000 worth of uniforms from our supplier, which is, which is fantastic. I'm just wondering, will that be reflected as a revenue and expense in term of these awards?
I believe they were donating the actual, like, equipment or the, I can't think of the. Thank you, uniforms. I couldn't think of the word. Versus a cash donation. This is only reflective of the actual income that we received.
I don't think we keep uniforms as an asset.
No, I guess what I was thinking.
But every year we spend money on uniforms. So is that, is that reflection of how much money you don't, just kind of my question? How much money we normally spend or budget on uniforms? Is that still in the budget or does that get taken out? Because now we don't have to, we have less, we have a less amount of uniforms that we have to purchase at this point.
So I can just speak to that briefly. I think when Mike Mosserino presented his athletic department update, he did share a uniform replacement cycle. So in the budget was one-fifth of the uniform replacement cycle. This allowed us to accelerate through, so we're five years ahead now, but we will continue to need, so we have one-fifth in the budget that is, that is presented or that was voted. And then that will continue in the future years as well.
The, the uniforms will be replaced, like I think we had, maybe seven years. I don't say seven years, but now maybe it's only three. For some.
I got you.
So we were, I mean, I think, is the question, were, were we adequately funding the uniform replacements in FY24 budget? And we were, we were staying to our typical funding that we have had in the past for uniform replacements. We were woefully underfunded to retool all of our uniforms to the Titans. And this was a one-time opportunity to accelerate that. So in five years, we would have still been talking about changing the tomahawk to the Titan, and now we've accelerated that process.
So every uniform is a Titan?
Ninety, ninety-five, I talked to Mike, ninety-five percent of the uniforms will have been transitioned as a result of this donation.
How do we determine what the five percent was?
I'm not sure that was the number that was shared with me.
On the JV, in the freshman?
Yeah, probably freshman. It's my guess.
I mean, usually they get, like, they get all the castoffs. Varsey gets one and then everything gets passed down to like a lower level.
Sometimes they get recircled. In baseball this year, they somehow recircled some really old. They didn't have a tomahawk.
Were they nice? Or were they like, they were woolen?
They're retro, they're cats, right?
So do we now accept this? Statement of revenue?
Same thing. So I'll make a motion to accept the statement of revenue as presented, subject to audit.
Okay. Second, I mean, moved by Matt, second.
Second.
Second by Paul. Any discussion? Any more discussion? All those in favor? That is unanimous. And athletic complex.
So it's hard to believe that the day after graduation, the trucks and equipment showed up and the fencing went up, so it was nice to see. And we have much to share. And first, we'll turn it over to Becky. That actually, athletic fields are a public works project. The amenities building is a construction project and two different procurements. So as part of the construction project, we do need a policy in place. So Becky will share information around that.
Sure. So the state does outline the procurement procedures, and as part of the, the building construction process, the school committee does need to adopt a procedure, and that is one for the approval of the designer selection process. We will be going up for a request for quotes for this project, which will give us some flexibility in terms of the questions that we'll be able to ask vendors. It'll be a two-part process where we'll have them submit more information about their firm based on the qualifications that we're looking for. We'll then rank them based on our preferences, based on that material selected, and then after that, we'll look at the pricing. And we'll have to come to a decision as to which firm we choose to select, so it's not automatically the lowest bidder, it is the most advantageous to the district. So the procedure that you're being asked to vote on tonight is actually one that has been written by the state, and they do ask all districts or any municipality who is planning to go through this process to adopt this procedure.
So is this a procedure? Is it a policy?
It's a procedure.
So it's, we don't have to do the whole policy second reading, all that other stuff?
Correct.
Okay. Do we, do we have the verbiage?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
It was, it was attached.
Thank you?
No, it was linked.
Oh, well, so it should be in here. Okay, I did not see it. All right. So any questions? Joan?
I'd like to make the motion. I'd like to move to approve the Northborough Southborough Regional School Committee Designer Selection Procedures in compliance with the State Designer Selection Law, MGL Chapter 7C, Sections 44 to 58, and for the purpose of procuring of design services for the amenities building and for any future building construction projects.
Second.
Moved by Joan, seconded by Paul. Any questions? All those in favor? That passes unanimously.
Thanks for the wording.
And then Keith will provide a high-level update of the progress thus far.
Yeah, so as Greg indicated, they weren't lying. As soon as graduation was complete, the, the next morning, DW arrived on site under the guidance of Yale Associates to begin the process. And starting with erosion controls and all the things you would expect in a construction site is what you see out back, and they were quickly able to get that fencing going and start, you know, demolition within, you know, 48 hours of that. So it was very exciting to see that. I think Sean reported that the disruption to school was, was minimal, although I think a lot of people were engaged in what was happening. So they could hear it, they could see it, and the vibe of the building itself was that, wow, they actually said, they actually did what they said they were going to do, which I think did pay dividends. Would you agree, Sean?
Yes, it was visibly, visible progress was much appreciated. People just saw it happening very quickly, a lot happening, grandstands are down, and it's very hard to miss how much work has happened very quickly.
I need to follow on Instagram.
Yeah, you can follow it on Instagram. Mr. Cahill updates that a few times a week, and it's really fun to see, see it happening in almost real time.
And that's what we're expecting for the summer, is he'll continue those updates. That's not going to conclude with the end of school, that'll continue over the course of the project. So we're excited for that. What's that?
I love the updates.
Yeah, they're good. I think it's a, it's a nice method to keep on the truth, yeah. So it's going to be a combination of efforts to make that happen, and Mr. Cahill's going to oversee it with the guidance of Greg, myself, and Principal Bevan, so we're excited to keep, keep that rolling. The other thing I noted, you know, similar to what was said is yes, there was some attention to it, but it didn't provide a high level of distraction from what was happening in the building. I think DW was very in tune to that, and although there was the rumble of some construction equipment, it was a minimal distraction for students and things were able to continue without any type of major interruption at all. A few, few noise bangs from time to time, but overall, we're able to do that. We also informed the abutters, the neighbors, the abutters, that construction was going to begin, and we did not hear anything from them, any questions or comments or concerns. So all systems are go in that regard. The other thing I'd like to update on is the PFAST situation. We are continuing to work with our hired firm, our LSP, through the Beta Group out of Rhode Island to help us navigate the process. And what happened on June 13th was additional soil sampling. So what we did as promised is continuing to get a lot of that baseline information so that we know what we can. so that we know what we can and cannot do with the soils that are going to be, um, onsite and need to be maintained onsite and so on and so forth. So it is, sounds very complicated, but actually it's becoming quite simple. Uh, our LSP has been a great hire for us and is really helping us navigate it well, and we were just in meetings today to talk about what we're doing next, so it is pretty exciting, and we are hoping to get, uh, final soil sample results on July fifth. So we will get them to the lab immediately on, on, on June thirteenth, and the hope is for favorable results as of, uh, July fifth, and therefore, you know, construction project will continue uninterrupted. So as of now, it has not been interrupted. I think through some creative work of DW and, um, our LSP, we've been able to navigate that, so as of now, we are on schedule, and we'll certainly provide updates to the committee as needed throughout the summer and certainly at the beginning of the school year, so, so far, so good, and I hope it continues that way. Happy to answer any questions.
Where are we supposed, where do we anticipate we will be at the beginning of the school year?
Good question. Because we haven't gotten those soil results yet, uh, DW hasn't been able to give us a firm calendar. So my hope is that in early July, we do, are able to not only get those results, know our pathway for that, we'll also be able to establish a pretty good, uh, calendar with milestones, and that will be something that we, we share out with the community once it's been established.
The other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Policy development, distribution, none at this time. Another chance at public comment. Maybe? Nope? Okay, moving on. Personnel, distribution of personnel reports? It's in your packet?
Yes, so in your packet, and the HR department is busily working with the leadership team hiring for next year, so we still have some open positions, but I think we are in a fairly good place, and we will be advertising for the career coordinator position, um, most likely in early August and launch that, um, but right now, our focus is on filling the, um, openings that are.
We have a few openings left, I think by the end of next week, we should have them all completed. We're mid-process or near the end of process on all.
Wow, okay. Communication, school community member reports? Nope, okay. Approval bills and payrolls, we will do online, and agenda items for next month, NEASK update, clearly athletic complex update. Uh, anything else anyone want to hear from? Well, you have the whole summer to decide. Okay, with that being said, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Joan.
Second.
All those in favor? We are adjourned.